Good evening and welcome back to the Florida Academy of Family Physicians Thursday Night Webinar Series, developed to support FAFP members in navigating the COVID crisis. We've decided to structure tonight's webinar well a little differently. It's a town hall style meeting focused on advocacy, COVID, and Florida family medicine reimagined. It features FAFP leaders and experts focusing on topics such as scope of practice expansion for nurse practitioners and pharmacists, how the FAFP has been assisting and will continue to support family physicians through the COVID-19 pandemic, and how best to position family medicine in Florida as the healthcare landscape continues to rapidly evolve. Most importantly, in the purest form of a town hall meeting, FAFP members can share their views and concerns to assist the leadership in making certain academy priorities remain consistent and in alignment with the membership. My name is Jay Nelson, FAFP Executive Vice President, now once again be moderating tonight's webinar. Similar to all FAFP webinars, participants are in listen-only mode, but are encouraged to type questions that our panelists can see and will attempt to answer either during or at the end of the presentation. Now let's get started by introducing our star studded panel. You can see we turned on the video screens tonight and they all have teleprompters and they're ready to go. As you can see on the screen, our first presenter will be FAFP lobbyist, Mr. Jim Doughton from the law firm of Metz Husband &amp; Doughton from Tallahassee. I've been associated with lobbyists my entire career, but have never worked with one as capable, knowledgeable, or more respected than Jim and his team, including one of his partner, Amy Diaz-Lion, who is also available to assist tonight if necessary. Next, we have Dr. Chris Keduri, who is Associate Chair, Department of Community Health and Family Medicine at the UF Health Campus in Jacksonville. He's done a phenomenal job, phenomenal, of chairing our FAFP COVID-19 Task Force and serves on the FAFP Board. And last but certainly not least is FAFP Past President, Dr. Kristi Alexander, who is an Associate Professor at the FSU College of Medicine and practices at the new FSU Primary Health Clinic, which focuses on care for the underserved in Tallahassee. If her patients haven't seen her in clinic, well, rest assured, they've seen her on the evening news, as she's been a mainstay in helping the local community understand and navigate the COVID-19 crisis. So let's get started with our first presentation by Jim Doughton, who's going to serve, let's see here, I should have put that up there. Sorry about that, but Jim is going to get us started by giving a brief update regarding the outcome of the 2020 Legislative Session, which ended well. It kind of ended abruptly. As you can imagine, the legislators really enjoy the limelight, but this year, they had their thunder stolen at the end of session by COVID-19 outbreak occurring immediately upon adjourning in mid-March. However, their actions impacting medicine did not go unnoticed, and Jim is going to walk us through some of the key issues. Jim?
Thank you, Jay, and thank you for having me tonight. It's nice to have this, this video function, as I've been told often that I have a face for radio. I'm joined with my partner, Amy Diaz-Lion, and we've had the pleasure of working with FAFP for a number of years, and through those years have worked on scores of policy issues that have impacted family medicine. During that time, one of the primary issues that sort of permeated all of our work has been dealing with scope of practice expansion issues by, by non-physician healthcare providers. And really, it's been going on, that issue's been going on for decades, but for the last nine years in particular, there has been a direct assault on, on a scope of practice and what a physician can do vis a vis a, an allied health professional, an APRN, a PA, et cetera. And those last nine years have been sort of an all-out lobbying effort, which we'll talk about. This past Legislative Session, we saw the broadest expansion of scope of practice in the primary care setting in the history of Florida, really. And as I mentioned, it was this, this nine-year effort led by leaders in the House who were elected nine years ago and worked their way up through the legislative process to positions of power, including two chairman, excuse me, three chairman of the healthcare, various healthcare committees, and the Speaker of the House of Representatives. And one of the members of those healthcare committees is a physician himself, so we were sort of being attacked from within, if you will. It's always a very difficult place to be in politically when you have a Speaker of the House, who is one of the three most powerful people in government, saying that, "I am not leaving Tallahassee unless X happens." That rarely happens in sort of a collaborative process where you expect the governor, the Senate President, and the Speaker to be sort of horse trading. But when a, when one of the three draws a line in the sand and says, "I'm not leaving town without this," it is extremely, extremely difficult to beat that back from a lobbying perspective. And speaking of lobbying, I wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk to you, next slide, Jay, exactly about what FAFP has done over the nine years. And obviously for years before that, but the first thing we did is partner with the Florida Medical Association and other specialties in an all-out lobbying effort, member-to-member, to try and educate them about why expanding the scope of practice for APRNs, PAs, et cetera, is harmful to patients and how it actually will not save overall costs into the, into the system. The lobbyists, Amy and myself and our colleagues in Tallahassee, were joined on a weekly basis with, with your members. There's been a tremendous amount of activity from your, from your membership, whether it's been members of the Legislation Committee or just rank-and-file members who have taken the time to come to Tallahassee to meet with both their local legislators and with other legislators across the state to testify and committee. And what I can tell you have been, you know, very adversarial hearings where we weren't always able to get our voice heard because of the, the strength of the opposition, and especially in the House of Representatives were, were anti, anti our practice. We also engaged in the media and promoted grassroots effort in order for our members to get to know legislators in their home districts. All of those sort of traditional lobbying and grassroots activities work 99% of the time, but as I referenced earlier, when you have a Speaker of the House who is just entrenched, sort of what the, what the other 119 members of the House think doesn't really matter when, when you have a leader that, that dug in. So what the outcome is, was of the Legislative Session, as the governor passed, the legislature passed and the governor signed three specific bills that I'm going to go into a little bit of detail about, all on the same day. And I, just to give you some context, when I say it's all on the same day, that is something else that never happens in Tallahassee. Typically, the legislature passes a bill, they take a couple of weeks to sort of look at the bill and prepare the bill, and then they send it to the governor, who has 15 days to act on the bill, and there's plenty of time to work the governor's office, try and educate, maybe try to get a veto. All of that process that I just described happened in about a two and a half hour period. The legislature passed the bill, Speaker sent it directly to the governor, and the governor signed it within just a couple of hours. And that just shows you sort of the level of opposition that family medicine confronted this past Legislative Session. So there are three bills we're going to talk about, and as I go through them, I'm going to give you sort of a broad overview. There are more detailed versions of what the bills do, including a complete staff analysis of the legislation that we provide in the FAFP End of Legislative Session Report and that Jay has access to, and is somewhere on your website that I'm sure Jay can, can tell you exactly where. And secondarily, what I'll mention at the end is just where these bills are in the process in terms of timing and implementation. The first bill that we're going to talk about tonight, though, is the APRN Scope of Practice Expansion. That was House Bill 607, and I mentioned the staff analysis that accompanies that. And this basically allow AP, allows APRNs to practice independently in general internal medicine, family practice, and general primary care. It also allows APRNs to take a number of other actions, sign death certificates, determining capacity, draft guardian plans, initiate the Baker Act, admit to a healthcare facility. They can also manage and discharge patients in the healthcare facility, facility context. They can perform some subcutaneous surgical procedures. So again, a very broad APRN independent practice expansion. In order to become this APRN on steroids, you have to first, of course, register and have an unencumbered license and be free of discipline for, I think, five years, and then complete 3,000 clinical practice hours, which can include instruction hours within the last five years. And there's also some graduate-level semester hours to work in differential diagnosis. Interestingly enough, the Senate, who is a little bit more physician-friendly, included the graduate-level semester hours in the pharmaceutical, pharmacology area and in the differential diagnosis area. And there are some APRNs who are a little, who've been in the practice a little bit longer who do not have that college degree, and so are in a little bit of a disadvantage compared to their, their younger peers who may have that four-year undergraduate degree. I suspect the next Legislative Session, you'll see some interest in trying to ease that, that restriction. There are also some other requirements that the APRNs have to meet, including there's a council that's created, that create, that's going to determine what the standards of practice are. They, there are some insurance requirements. Insurers cannot mandate that a patient see an APRN, so there are some, I guess, protections in there, but still a very, very broad scope of practice expansion for APRNs, allowing them basically practice independently in a primary care setting. The, the second bill that I wanted to mention tonight, in many ways, sort of the list of horribles is, and Amy and I believe this is maybe the most egregious, and this is a pharmacist's scope of practice. This bill was developed much later in the process with not as much detail as we see in the APRN expansion. And you, you might expect that the pharmacist's scope of practice was strongly supported by the Walgreens, the CVSs, the Walmarts, Publix of the, of the world, who are, who are trying to sort of change what that business model in the pharmacy looks like. Pharmacist may now enter into something called the Collaborative Pharmacy Practice Agreement with a physician, and they can manage chronic health conditions, and you name it, whether it's HIV and AIDS, obesity, COPD, type 2 diabetes. They can also test and screen for and treat minor non-chronic health conditions, that's flu tests, lice, skin conditions, uncomplicated infections they can deal with, and also can prescribe non-controlled substances, still under a collaborative, collaborative practice protocol, but a, a very, very broad expansion about what that pharmacist can do when, when a customer comes into the, into the Walgreens. This does, again, have some restrictions on, on what, who this pharmacy is, they have to have a doctor of pharmacy or, or five years of experience, a 20-hour approved course. There is some professional liability coverage, and then the Board of Pharmacy gets to provide some other qualifications as it deems necessary. As I mentioned before, though, you cannot, the pharmacist will not be able to prescribe controlled substances, and they can also not modify or discontinue medication who is not, from the physician who is not in the direct collaborative relationship. So they can certainly modify the prescription if they're in that direct collaborative relationship, but they can't change, change a prescription if it's written by someone not in a collaborative relationship. Then the third bill I wanted to mention briefly deals with consultant pharmacists, and this is typically in the, in the nursing home setting, although that language is a little bit broader than nursing homes, but it does allow a consultant pharmacist to provide medication management, evaluate labs, conduct some patient assessments, under, again, a collaborative practice agreement with a facility's medical director or a licensed physician or dentist. You would think of that mostly in the nursing home settings, but you also can now do it in the AMSURG Center, inpatient hospice, hospital nursing home, substance use treatment center. So again, a, a broadening of what, what these consultant pharmacists can do, a little bit less onerous frankly than the, the first and second bill that I described. Where these bills are in the implementation phase is something that's important for all of us to know. I think a question, an easy question you might have would be, well, when do these go into effect? The reality is the laws go into effect July 1st, and the governor's already signed the legislation. However, there are details, for example, the definition of primary care has to be defined, and that's where the Department of Health has been given rulemaking authority. There is a tremendous amount of pressure being put on the Department of Health at this point in time by both the legislative leadership and the governor to expedite this rulemaking process that, that the department has to go through. But still, just to give you an example, in addition to defining what primary care is, they also have to develop what the form is going to look like for that APRN to register. Those things take time, and there's a process through the Administrative Procedure Act where there has to be notice and, in a hearing and a discussion before, before they can put these laws practically into effect, before somebody can actually sign up, there has to be a form for them to sign, for example. However, these decisions are not decisions in which, for example, in most cases, the Board of Medicine may have a tremendous amount of impact. This is where the Board of Pharmacy, the Pharmacy Board is going to decide that Pharmacy Practice Act. The Board of Nursing is going to decide most aspects of the APRN expansion. So I wouldn't say it's a stacked deck, but it's certainly going to be somewhere where we are not based in statute where physicians are going to have direct input into that in most cases. We are going to be watching that rulemaking process. If I were to, to take bets as these details are being worked out, I suspect you're going to see both on the pharmacist's side and the APRN side, early fall for, for, to see these APRNs, for the ability to practice independently, and for the pharmacist to enter into that collaborative practice agreement. So a lot more to come. One of the things that, that FAFP does just a terrific job of is keeping its members apprised of what's going on in government, and, and we'll work with Jay to make sure that, that one, we can get these questions answered if you have any, and two, keep you posted just on the progress of this, so you know what the implementation phase looks like. And with that, I appreciate your time, and we can take questions now or later, however you'd like to handle it, Jay.
Yeah, we're going to defer those to later. We're going to move on to, thank you, Jim. I appreciate that summary. I'm sure we'll be coming back to you. Going to move on to COVID-19 Task Force Chair, Dr. Chris Keduri, who's going to share what's been accomplished and what to expect in terms of supporting FAFP members through the ongoing pandemic. Dr. Keduri?
Thank you, Jay, for having me tonight, and thank you, Jim, for your group's work. It was a tough battle in Tallahassee and appreciate everything that your group does. And so after that tough battle in Tallahassee in March of this year, all of our lives changed drastically with the COVID-19 pandemic. And so at that time, Dr. Alexander created a COVID-19 Task Force, which was developed with doctors around the state who were from different sized practices, who came together to say, "How can we support our physicians during this time?" And so there's a couple initiatives that we took. The biggest was to develop webinars, and so there was a series of eight webinars that happened on Thursday nights, and all of the physicians and speakers who spoke were on a volunteer basis. It was amazing, the turnout, and can cover topics such as telemedicine, 1.0 and 2.0, best practices, stress management, legal implications, evidence-based primer, Sean Martin, the incoming Executive Vice President of the AFP, covered national advocacy and where the AFP is, health disparities, and we finished with the return to clinic. And so if you're interested in any of these webinars, they're available on demand at fafp.org, and we, we plan on continuing them as the need is there, and we'll talk a little bit more about that on the next couple slides. One of our biggest successes has been providing over 15,000 face masks to family physicians around the state, and Jay dubbed this, "Project Protecting Florida's Family Physicians," and so this is an amazing effort, and this was free of charge to physicians around the state who are having trouble obtaining PPE. Our group wrote many letters to Governor Ron DeSantis, letting him know some of our concerns and why it would be important to have stay-at-home orders, what some of the liability concerns would be, and some of the challenges with reopening schools. And so I think that our advocacy made a big difference. If you look at the timing of the letters, the timing of some of the changes in the state, this was a huge impact. And I think one of the greatest resources that we built is the resource page. So if you haven't had a chance to look at the FAFP COVID-19 resource page, it's a wealth of information, we're updating it daily, and we're adding to it. And so if there's anything that you can see that we could add to it, please let us know, but it's a tremendous resource. So the other work that we did was we helped coordinate meetings with the students and the residents around the state. I know they had some unique challenges, and so we want to make sure that they were supporting each other and understanding each other. We helped connect some of the volunteer, some of the retired physicians in Florida to volunteer positions, so they can help out in the response. And so one of the things that we're working on currently, and we're very excited about, is coming up on June 24th, we'll have our next webinar, and this is going to be different. This will be a Wednesday, this will not be a typical Thursday, and the Surgeon General from the state of Florida, Dr. Scott Riffkees, will be giving a presentation on the importance of vaccinations, both for children and adults during the COVID-19 pandemic, and an update on what's going on in the state of Florida. So we're excited about this, so just keep an eye on your email for invitations to that webinar. We also have a couple other future webinars that we're looking at in July. A big thing that we want to do now is just make sure everyone is comfortable practicing, and everybody's comfortable establishing our new return to normal. So if there's anything that you feel you need or any resources you need, let us know. That's what the task force is here for. And just really want to sum it up tonight, and then I think that's something that's really important, is that we must remain engaged. The battle has not been won yet. So if anyone's looked at the news this week, today we've had the highest number of positive cases in the state of Florida so far. We've had 1,698 cases. In the past week, we've had 8,886 cases in the state of Florida, so the numbers are increasing. And so it's important that we, family physicians, remain vigilant. It's important that we keep doing what we're doing and paying attention to what's going on in our counties and going on in our state. And so I'd just like to finish with three key points today. The first is, we have to protect our staff and physicians. And so we know that we're, PPE is properly used, our staff and physicians are safe, so make sure that we're maintaining our protocols, make sure that we're using PPE properly. There's been over 600 healthcare workers in the U.S. that have died from COVID-19, and so this is a real threat to our staff and to our physicians, and we must continue to use a PPE properly. The second is, I think all of us need to educate our patients and educate our communities on how important it is to continue with social distancing and mask-wearing. There was a great article that came out today in the Proceedings of the Royal Society showing that if everyone wore masks, how dramatically we can decrease the spread of COVID-19. And so I think that this is just something that each of us as family physicians need to do. We need to talk to each of our patients, why it's important, why my mask protects you and your mask protects me. I think our patients out there don't understand how important this is when they're in public spaces. And the third is, I encourage everyone to start preparing for the fall. It will be a challenge if there is an influenza outbreak along with the, you know, second wave of COVID, and so it's important to start thinking about, "Am I preparing? Am I getting our influenza vaccines ordered? Am I speaking to my patients now about how important it is to come back in September, October for the vaccinations?" And so I think we need to start thinking ahead now, thinking about how we're going to test, thinking about how we're going to triage patients, and thinking about, you know, what the world will look like come November, December, January. So we just want to encourage everybody to stay vigilant. You know, the battle has not been won, and if there's any ways that we could support the members around the state, no matter what type of practice you're in, please let us know.
All right, great, thank you, Dr. Keduri. We appreciate it. Great, great points. Sure, we'll be coming back to you as well. Next, Dr. Alexander's going to walk us through what the FAFP leadership is focused on looking forward, a challenging proposition amongst so much uncertainty. However, she's been doing an excellent job, along with the Board of Directors, leading during these unique circumstances. Dr. Alexander?
Thank you, Jay. I'd like to start by just thanking our panelists, Jim and Amy, you guys have been incredible. And to let you guys know what was happening in Tallahassee in the early months of the year, I was there multiple times, was given the chance to testify once, brought medical students with me who testified, and had doctors across our city testify on behalf of the FMA, on the behalf of us, on behalf of doctors in general. It was a massive, massive effort, and we can get into the specifics of that a little bit more if there are questions, but I just want you all to rest assured that we did not go down without a fight. We were there, we were present, and they saw our faces, and we still did not succeed. So we need to be, be aware that the effort was, was, was big and it was strong, and it is, it's as though that the decision was made before session even started, and so we can talk about that as well. To Dr. Keduri, I thank you so very much for all of the time and effort with the task force and, and having everybody come together so quickly to discuss what's happening across our state with COVID, and how we as family physicians can help each other and help our patients through that process. And for those of you who may not know, those masks that he mentioned, those 15,000 some masks, were all bagged by Jay, his family, and our FAFP staff. When you talk about a grassroots effort, it was one of the biggest grassroots efforts I've seen from our FAFP in a very long time, so thank you to all of you. And then we went straight from that into the murder of George Floyd and the anti-racism movements that are happening across our country right now. It has been quite a year, and I just thank everyone for their support through this entire process. As far as where we go from here, in thinking about everything that's happened to our entire state, the members of our state, our family physician members, and our patients, I saw this as an opportunity. This is a new beginning. The system is, is just completely changed around us, and we now have an opportunity to reimagine Florida family medicine. And in doing so, we called together a council of members, leaders from across the state, family physician leaders specifically, from various practice types, various practice sizes, hospital systems, academics, geographic areas, representing family physicians from across the state of Florida beyond this council. Our charge, to serve as a family medicine think tank, to analyze the rapidly evolving healthcare environment in Florida, and to provide strategic guidance as to how to effectively position the FAFP to support our members over the next five to 10 years. What you see before you are just a few topics under consideration, but I have to say, we really did say, "Think outside of the box. Think about everything we can do and how we can truly reimagine family medicine." We plan on meeting just a few times to bring some very specific recommendations back to our board no later than December of 2020. And even though we're fighting all of these battles, I really do see this as the opportunity to change the way we practice medicine for the years, for years to come. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I appreciate all of you, and let me just say, a huge thank you to all of our members, the boots on the ground, those on the front lines, people that are dealing with this, people who have been out of their practices, who are retiring because of COVID-19. We feel for you, and we are here for you, and we would love to hear more from you, which is the point of this town hall tonight. So I would not like to take anybody any more time and really just open it up for questions for this next half hour.
Great, thank you, Dr. Alexander, and we can get right to it. We've had a couple of our participants send in some questions. We'll start with Dr. Keduri. How do we convince people who refuse flu shots that it is critical to get them? Do we need media help, or what do you, what do you suggest in terms of the best way for us to do that?
So I think there's, there's two ways, and obviously I think media is going to be important, and I think everybody respects Dr. Fauci, and so, you know, a lot of people will listen to, to his words, but I think, you know, what makes us different is we have relationships with our patients, and we have our patients who trust us. And this is a time to sit down with each of your patients and say, "Hey, this is important." You know, I know some- You know, I know sometimes you've been on the fence. I know that, you know, sometimes, you know, you may have heard stories, but we really need to do all we can to protect you as we move into the fall and we move into next winter. We don't know what it's going to bring. And we have to do our best to, to do everything we can to make sure that we do not overwhelm the state and overwhelm our hospitals with the dual influenza and COVID pandemic at the same time. And so I think just that education, that saying, i- it is important to me. And let me hear any of your concerns. I think that makes the biggest difference. So I think the battle here as family physicians, you know, not only is it going to be won through the media, but most importantly, won on one.
Great. It's a, it's a good answer. I think it's really important. I mean, it's, it's, it's really no different than when we talk about, and as you mentioned earlier, to stress the importance of wearing masks and physical distancing. I mean, this is something that we can do with, um, uh, you know, little perceived effort, uh, you know, on everybody's part. It's a matter of, um, uh, kind of that social shaming, if you will, or just, you know, feeling uncomfortable doing something out of the norm. But, um, uh, I think our members' ability to influence our patients has always been and will hopefully always be, uh, critical. And, uh, this is no exception. So we're, we're going to move into a, um, I'm going to ask Jim and Amy this question, um, about commercial insurance. And, you know, I'm kind of involved in this as well and I'll help out as much as I can. But any, any idea where commercial insurance is going to go in terms of extending parity payment and waivers and, and, uh, even Medicaid? Uh, of the changes that have occurred in terms of payment and billing and, and, um, uh, how they've kind of lightened the restrictions, so to speak. Is there an idea of how long that's going to last? Jim, I think we're going to need you.
Muted. Sorry about that, Jay. Um, yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to tell. I, I think, um, in our early conversations with legislators, they anticipate, um, that the 2021 legislative session is going to, is going to talk a lot about COVID response. And they are going to look at things that, um, uh, the government has learned through this, sort of any silver linings they can, uh, uh, they can find. And I, and I also think that, uh, while, uh, for example, Medicaid expansion will not likely be on the table for this, uh, for this governor, um, and, and for the current makeup of the legislature, um, uh, I, I think there are, there are certain actions that the state has taken that, uh, legislature will seriously consider implementing. And, and a lot of that could be access issues. You know, we would like to see, uh, we would like to see parity for telehealth continued. That, uh, that's something I think the legislature will spend some time, um, looking at. As you know, the legislature are big proponents of telehealth. And, uh, while they were not two years ago interested in engaging in the relationship between the provider and the insurer and, and mandating that there be that payment parity. I think the data that they're going to see, uh, could helpfully, hopefully be persuasive. And just as a reminder, uh, the 2021 legislative session does not start until March of next year. So after the election in November, legislature will hold a series of interim committee meetings, uh, beginning really in December, but for the most part in January and February before that March legislative session. So they've got, they've got some time to focus, but I, uh, I suspect elections and COVID response are, uh, and, uh, the unemployment compensation system are probably the big three things on their mind right now.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Um, we're going to move on and hopefully y'all can hear me. Apparently I'm having some, uh, some slow internet connection on my end, but then we're going to move on back to a COVID question. Uh, drive-through testing by COVID by self-swab and at CVS exposure to others. Um, is there any idea of, um, wow, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to come back to this one. Uh, it's one of our, uh, stalwarts, Dr. Price asking that one. I'll, I'll come back to it. But, um, Dr. Skiduri, there was a question about getting a copy of your slides and there was also the, um, uh, as well as Jim, so that everyone knows these slides will be available online. We will, uh, uh, release it tonight as early as tonight or, or in the morning. So you can re-listen to it. Or if you need to, uh, uh, obtain copies of the slides as you asked, but, um, the, if we look at different payment models, um, this is, this is an interesting question and it, it kind of crosses over the, uh, issue of, um, you know, uh, you know, private and public, uh, you know, we're, we're seeing a, a problem with, uh, um, and I'm going to go to Dr. Alexander on this one. I'm going to put her on the spot a little bit because we talked about it some last night on our, our call for reimagining family medicine in Florida. They said, you know, what, what do we see in terms of different payment models that would help family physicians in terms of, uh, being able to weather these storms when in-office patient visits aren't what they used to be and telemedicine may not, you know, always being paid for parity like prospective payment or otherwise. What is your sense of, uh, what we may be able to influence the payers on that, on that side?
Well, I can tell you that it is already happening on a national level at the AMA level, for example. That's just one example that with telehealth in general, there's a big push for it not to go. I'm going to, I'm going to combine this with a scope answer as well. So there's concern about nurse practitioners, um, speaking over, you know, with increased scope of practice, uh, taking over telehealth as well. So on a national level, everybody is looking at this to keep it under the medical home 100% to not let it reverse so that we continue to get paid for telemedicine and to increase payment across the board. I think we should follow that model. I think we should follow in those, in those footsteps that way. Protect who we are as family physicians and make sure we're still the leader of the team if we choose to still follow the patient-centered medical home, uh, model. Fee for service is still talked about. Our views are still talked about. There's, there's a lot that we have opportunity to influence at this point. And so we would love to hear from all of you as members as to where you guys are getting hit in the pocket so that we can help you with that. But at this point, telemedicine isn't going away. It's a matter of how can we continue payment for that and be paid well for it as well as if they're sitting in our office with us. Um, so that's just one form of payment reform that's happened already and that we want to keep in place so that, um, we can continue having people being paid for, for the services that they're providing.
Yeah, that's a great answer. Um, it's, it's hard. It's, um, it's, uh, one of those things that we're going to, based upon the fact that we've only been dealing with this three months. But, uh, you know, we know the payment has to change significantly as we've talked about on that task force as well, that, uh, primary care currently accounts for about seven percent of the total spend in healthcare, but we represent or family medicine and primary care represents over half of the patient visits. So, um, the importance of that is, is certainly, uh, significant and undervalued. Um, so let's, let's go back. I'm sorry. I messed up the question earlier. You know, you're going to have to give me some, some, extend some grace. But, uh, what, what we're, what Dr. Price was trying to ask, I believe, is comments on drive-through testing for COVID by self-swab at pharmacies such as CVS. You know, it gives exposure to others and is there, is there anything about, you know, reports or close, uh, you know, for follow-up on positive tests? How do they get that through CVS? Or have you had any experience with that? Or what, what, what are suggestions in terms of how we deal with that?
So, you could, you know, with an honest answer, I, I don't have any experience getting results back from CVS, you know, at this point. I know that's available. You know, there's, there's concerns with how well you test and, and, and the technique that you use, I think is, is, is important. And then the other concerns is, are we using PPE properly? And so are we protecting our staff? So I think, you know, optimally, I would like to test on one of my patients done by someone who knows what they're doing, knows how to use the test properly and is using reputable lab. And so I would encourage my patients to, to do all three. And so if we're unsure of that, I, I would say to, you know, to find an alternative option. Um, again, I don't have, you know, the inner workings of how CVS or some of these groups are doing it. Um, so I, I can't say for sure what their quality is or data studies on it, but you, you, I, I think it's important that we want to make sure, especially in such an important test, that we're getting false positives and false. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, that a, a positive test is positive and negative test is negative. And so I think the quality of the test and the quality of the technique is important.
Fair enough. Um, that's an excellent, excellent answer. Um, we're going to switch back to advocacy now. I've got a question here that, um, uh, you know, is, is somewhat obvious, but yet it's, it's very important as we relate to, you know, uh, kind of the, the nose under the, the camel's nose under the tent from a, from a sense, it's just NPs, uh, that have independent practice. Uh, so what happened to the ARMPs? What happened to the, I mean, the PAs? What happened to the CRNA's? What do we expect to, to, uh, see, uh, from that in the coming legislative session, considering the, uh, new leadership coming in the House and the Senate?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good question. I think, um, you know, what we saw last year was just, um, the beginning. Uh, and while it dealt with primary care, I think, um, some of your other, uh, specialty, uh, society friends are going to be, uh, going to be where we were uh, in very, very short order. I do think, uh, clearly there was a lot of interest to try and include the PAs in, uh, in the legislation that passed. They were not included. It was a pretty big hit for them. And I believe they were given, um, a fair amount of assurances, uh, that the legislature will be back next year to try and include, uh, the PAs. The CRNA independent practice fight is, uh, is a long time, uh, discussion. It is a very, very well-financed, uh, discussion politically. Um, but you're going to see that issue come back. I also think, um, as I mentioned, you may see a loosening of those educational requirements for the autonomous APRNs. I think you're going to see, uh, a, a, a big push for psychologists prescribing that legislation and, uh, sort of reignited over the last few years. And, um, uh, uh, but I, I, um, I think the speaker in his, uh, as he was putting together his final end of session strategy, uh, decided to, uh, to go broad but tight. And, uh, and so he, he has a very, very permissive, uh, laws that pass for the people that are included in those laws. Um, you know, I, I think one of the things that we're going to be working on though is there, there's scope of practice fatigue, uh, in the legislature. Um, you know, that nine years, uh, where you had a speaker who, by the way, I think came to this, came to the issue and he's not a, you know, he's a good man. He's, he's not on the take or anything like that. He's a, he just has a huge, huge difference of opinion and, and we couldn't move him, but, um, there, you know, he dragged his members through a lot. And I think there's some fatigue, uh, overall on the scope issue. I don't anticipate it's going to be in the top, you know, two or three things for the next speaker, a guy named Chris Sprouse. The Senate, however, you really, it's ironic, you really could see a little bit of a role reversal. Uh, the Senate has been a place that, um, that, uh, organized medicine has been able to, um, to gain a lot of support. I think that's, you're not going to see that, uh, uh, that same level of support in the Senate, uh, moving forward. So I, I, I think, I think you're, I think there, there's a strong potential for a, a ripe, uh, timing on changes to, um, and broadening of the scope of practice.
So that's, that's good to, to, can we take that a step further? And this came from John Gross, who says you're a rock star. I don't know. I haven't seen you with long hair and playing a guitar. So it's possible, but I'm not sure. I know he likes to play guitar. Never lost. You know, should we be going on the offensive? Is it, so you say that scope of practice is, there's fatigue there, but is there an opportunity for us to go on the offensive considering the fact that we, um, you know, didn't exactly come out, um, on the right side of the coin, so to speak, on this? And we were, we were run over. Do we get any sympathy for that? And is this the right time to go after, you know, family medicine priorities in any regard?
Yeah, I think that one of the challenges that we've had politically and, 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 and it's not just family medicine. It's been, it's been, you know, all, all dox is when you sort of have everything, right? It's, you're a target. And so everyone kind of comes after you and it's been, uh, organized medicine has, has played defense for a long time. Now, F A F P, you know, we worked pretty hard on the direct primary care legislation, for example, but, you know, we've also, uh, been successful in trying to, uh, uh, trying to better fund, uh, primary care residency slots. For example, something the state wasn't, uh, super involved in up until, uh, a few years ago. But yeah, I think it's important to have a proactive agenda. I think, um, and frankly, uh, COVID also brings, you know, our, our stock is high right now. I mean, we're loving doctors. I wish it were going, you know, well, I shouldn't say that, but it would have been interesting. It would have been interesting had the legislative session been a little bit later in the process to see, uh, because, um, doctor stock is rising. So I do think it's a good opportunity and we look forward to working with, uh, Dr. Alexander and your team in terms of what family medicine should look like. But, uh, but yeah, it's, it's always good to be on the offensive and it's always a good opportunity. And then I'll shut up. But in the era of term limits, remember, these folks are leaving office. It's an eight-year term. Most of them don't last that long. And so we really do have an opportunity to educate a new crop of legislators and be for something and be an issue expert and be recognized as Dr. Alexander's, you know, getting recognized in the press a little bit locally. I mean, we need to be the person that the, the legislator picks up the phone and says, I really need a doc's perspective on this. Can I talk to?
Yeah.
Knowing so.
Important. Yeah, we are, we're always looking for people to do that because they do, you're trusted voice and, and, uh, our members should be, um, uh, well, they're all respected for that regard and, and they shouldn't be discouraged by what's, you know, happened, you know, happened back in March. And we need to continue to press forward. And Dr. Hill asked that, you know, is there a way to strengthen and prevent the continued infringement on scope of practice? So I, I'll take the liberty to say that, um, on behalf of Dr. Gross, our PAC chairman is, you know, support, supporting our PAC is one way because that's the way we influence the legislators and, um, how we work with our, our, uh, you know, experts in Tallahassee with Jim and Amy and others is, is through the ability to have, uh, access to these legislators and money is access. So, uh, we certainly appreciate everyone's help in, in that regard. I'm going to pivot a little bit and ask Dr. Alexander a question or Dr. Skiduri can join in because this is more, it's kind of more political necessarily than it is, um, you know, about how we treat COVID or, you know, dealing with patients. But, you know, it's, and it's loaded. Should the governor mandate masks in areas that are, um, less than six feet apart, given the spike in cases? What, what are you hearing in that? Cause I know you're talking a lot on the, you know, to local news and whatnot and on the radio about it. But, uh, what, what is the sense of mandates in, 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 in your experience?
I, because it's such a political issue and it infringes on rights, I don't know that politically it would happen, unfortunately. That's just my gut feeling. So based on that, I think it's extremely important that we continue to talk about the importance and the why. Not just you need to wear a mask, but why do you need to wear a mask? If we can teach people the reason behind it, maybe they'd be more apt to do it. And I know we're seeing all kinds of, you know, memes and various things as to what happens if you don't wear a mask and, you know, the transmission rate of one person's wearing them and the other person isn't and all that stuff. And it's important just to educate our patients and each other as to the importance of that and to be good role models. When we are in the community, we need to be wearing masks. They need to see the leaders doing it as well. And, and that's, that's a big part of it too. When I walk into the grocery store in a medical mask, everybody looks at me and I'm like, yep, you should be. So I think, I think that's part of it is, is being good role models around it, teaching it, teaching the why behind it. And then just as much as you can, getting out there to, um, encourage it. As Jay said, I, I'm on the local news every Wednesday and Friday and I say it every single time. In some way, shape or form, I say it every single time. So mandates are tough because it's, it's, you know, again, it gets into people's rights. It, I guess from a public health perspective, though, you could mandate it. So it depends on which avenue you go at it from. And Dr. Skiduri, if you have anything to add to that?
So over the next couple of weeks, I think you did a great job answering that, Dr. Alexander. I, I think over the next couple of weeks, there should be some better studies out that's showing what's working around the world and, and truly what is causing transmission, when is transmission happening? I think every week that goes by, we understand more and more about COVID-19. And it's, you know, there's a lot of catching up and there's a lot of things we fully don't understand, but I think just if we could share these studies with our patients, no matter what their politics are, no matter what their personal beliefs are, let them know, you know, you have the right to protect your fellow citizens and you can protect your family. I think people will buy into it. But I think it's going to be a one-on-one. let them know, you know, you have the right to protect your fellow citizens and you can protect your family. I think people will buy into it, but I think it's going to be a one-on-one, you know, work on our end. And I think that hopefully the media will pick up on data and say, you know, when we look at data, this is working. This is working in countries around the world. The countries who are doing this have very low rates of transmission. Countries who have a free-for-all are struggling and I think we're going to see that over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. I would agree with you and I'm going to, I'm going to ask you, Dr. Skuduri, while we're on you, there was a question from Dr. Bartley talking about writing continued work in school excuses. I'm not really sure exactly what the question is, but what I'm, what I'm, I think I'm, I'm seeing is, is it, you know, what is the expectation in terms of writing those? Is there any differences or anything that should be done that is unique to COVID versus, you know, the way that had been standard, you know, done for someone that's at risk or, you know, a child that doesn't need to be at school? Any thoughts?
Sure. So, you know, I think August is going to bring a, a lot of challenges and I don't think there's a clear consensus and then Dr. Alexander could probably jump in, you know, from the school perspective. You know, I, we're not sure what's going to happen, you know, come August. I think there's too many unknowns. We have two months between now and the start of school. And I think we're going to really have to have hard discussions, you know, as we are now with patients, you know, those patients who are calling up and saying, you know, I'm, I'm at high risk. You know, should I work from home? And I think that's something that's going to be a decision we have to talk about our, you know, patients. What are their risks? How can we minimize the risks at work? And, you know, just what can they do and can they work from home and still maintain a job? And so I think we're going to have to, you know, face those same questions with their children as they go back to school, if they do go back to school in some capacity. And so it's, it's going to be, I think, on an integral, individual, you know, case-by-case basis. And I think that we just have to, you know, work with the parents on, on that and what they feel is safe. There's, a lot can change in two months, you know, hopefully for the better, but possibly for the worse. And so I think just the, one thing I want to encourage everyone is just to pay attention to your local numbers and to see what's going on in your county and just to be aware of what the current transmission rates are.
Yeah, I can bounce off of that a little bit. I, I am on a task force that is talking about school reopenings and what that will look like. And it involves people from leaders from the Florida Department of Health, Department of, Department of Education, the Florida Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and then me on behalf of the family physicians. Our last call was speaking all about medically vulnerable children in particular, or children that have medically vulnerable parents or family members or caregivers and what that will look like if schools do reopen. There's a lot that's still unknown on how all of this is going to be handled and what the allowances are going to be. And if the children aren't able to come to school, how will they get that education if schools reopen? There's, it's a moving target. All of this, as you guys know, because from second to second, there are new updates, new guidelines, new this, new that. It's all being discussed though. And so I think as school, as we get closer to schools opening, which I believe is August 10th or something like that here in Leon County, those decisions are going to be made so that people will have guidance. We're working on guidance right now around all of that. And all of those leaders I just mentioned are going to be a part of creating that guidance. So again, it's just, it's so hard because so much has changed and like Chris said, the guidelines for masks are about to come out. What will that look like? Will it be any different than it's been over the past three months, which is wear a mask? You know, it's just really, really, it's, like I said, it's just a moving target and there are a lot of decisions still on the table.
Great, great answer. I appreciate that. And we're going to, we're going to wrap it up here. We've got five minutes left. I'm going to answer a question. There was a one talking about, you know, insurers and will they continue to pay a parity and otherwise after June 26th, when some of the major insurers indicate that we remain in constant contact with the insurers, private and, and, and public. CMS, you got to give them credit. They have been on the edge of everything with this and been first out on most of these advisories and what they've done to address, you know, patient care and how payment has been expanded or rules have been expanded. You know, telemedicine is a great example of that and how they've allowed for not only parity payment, but extending rules for synchronous versus asynchronous, you know, telemedicine visits. So we will be, we will be informing the membership as soon as that information comes out and work closely with Jim and Amy's office and other partners within organized medicine, the A F P in particular, to make sure that we get that out. So that is the last question. I will, I will ask any one of our panelists if they have any concluding remarks before I do mine.
I just want to thank our members again for everything that you are doing across our state to represent family medicine so well and to give the patients the care that you do. As Dr. Skuduri said, we, we are the voice for our patients in many instances. And so I just appreciate everything that everyone's doing and I really do mean it. If you have suggestions on what we should be doing or what we can do for you or your patients, please email us, call us. You can text me. I'll give you my phone number right now. It's 850-508-4006. I'm serious. Text me. Because we're here for you. This isn't, I'm, I'm here for you. We are here for you. That's our point. So please, we, we welcome the suggestions and thank you all for being on this webinar tonight, this town hall.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, that concludes tonight's webinar. I'd like to once again thank Jim, Chris and Christie for their time, leadership and expertise. Please remember that questions after tonight's session can be emailed to the F A F P and we will get those answers to you as soon as possible if they were not provided during the call. Furthermore, all F A F P webinars, like I said earlier, are available on demand by going to www.fafp.org. You can find them under communications. We can also find them under the COVID resources webpage. There are links provided there. We hope that you will join us next week or in two weeks, excuse me, as Dr. Skuduri had referenced, for our next webinar on June 24th, featuring State Surgeon General Dr. Scott Rifke, who will be presenting how Florida's family physicians can address vaccination decreases during COVID-19. Well, I think we did it. We're at basically nine o'clock. We want to thank you once again for participating and hope that you have a wonderful evening. We appreciate all that you're doing for your patients. Keep it up. Good night, be well and stay safe. There you go. Take care.